Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see a nice big crowd again. It's been a few years. On behalf of the mayor and council, I want to welcome everyone tonight to our first meeting of the year, our organization meeting. Tonight, we're going to swear in our council members-elect, Delia Hamlet and Lisa Allen. And we're going to have all sorts of activities. So hang in there, enjoy it, and let's start by doing the roll call. Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
Okay. Can I ask everyone to rise and lead in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to our invocation, we were fortunate enough to have the Summit High School quartet, string quartet, with us this evening, and they were playing during the reception. And I hope you all enjoyed that. And we just want to express our thanks to the students and to our orchestra director. So... Mayor Rades would like to present some gifts to the group.
Yes, so would the York students and the director, please come forward to the podium. So we were very fortunate to have you play for us, and you have a wonderful director. Thank you very much. I want to recognize each of you. Andrew Chung. Henry Rising. Emma Vitaci. Sophia Kew. And to your director, Vivina Jovich. For you, thank you very much. Enjoy these flowers. Here's some Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda is our invocation, our distinguished Reverend Dr. Dennison Harriel Jr. Will you please come forward and deliver your invocation for us?
Let us pray. Almighty and Creator God, we invoke your presence and power here tonight. You have called us to be your people, and you have purposed our lives. Regardless of our race, economic class, gender, heritage, or occupation, we belong to you. We thank you for the faithful service of retiring councilpersons Danny O'Sullivan and Beth Little. As we pray for them, we also pray for the recently elected councilpersons, Lisa Allen and Delia Hamlet, and councilpersons Vartan, Hairston, Fox, Miniger, and Levine, Mayor Noah Rades, other city governmental officials and volunteers. Empower and enable them and the mayor to work together for the common good of everyone. We pray, oh God, that the diversity of Summit is accepted and celebrated as a blessing and a strength. Since we are all of one blood, help us to respect one another and ourselves and to always resist the temptation to think that we have a franchise on truth. Empower and fill Mayor Rades, city councilpersons, officials, and the residents of this city with a spirit of civility, kindness, love, justice, compassion, and peace. Thank you, God, for balancing our pre-existing conditions of imperfection with your forgiveness, grace, mercy, and love. Thank you for blessing this city in so many ways and for the gifts you have given to this governing body and to each of us. Teach and help us to use our gifts to glorify you and to be a blessing to others. I pray this prayer in your name, the one who has the whole world in your hands and in whom we are to trust. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Harriel. Our next order of business is now to swear in our newly elected. So if I may have, Delia Hamlet, who will be sworn in as councilmember in the first ward. Will you please come forward with anyone you wish to join you? Yes, the swearing-in will... We have your paper well here, so... The swearing-in will be administered by Assemblywoman Nancy Munoz. Who would like to hold the Bible? Do you want to hold the Bible? Sure. Okay. You all are going to put the left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. There's someone else to hold it. Raise your right hand, please. I state your name. I, Delia Hamlet, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all the duties of the position of the councilmember, Ward One, according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations, Councilmember Hamlet. Please take your seat. Okay. Councilmember-elect Lisa Allen of Ward Two, please come forward with your husband, Patrick, and your family and anyone else you wish to be sworn in. Raise your right hand. Left hand on the Bible. I state your name.
I, Lisa Allen.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all the duties of the position of councilmember, Ward Two, according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Councilmember Allen, will you please take your seat at the dais? Okay. Our next order of business, the election of our 2023 council president. Nominations are in order. Do I hear any nominations? Yes, Councilmember Fox?
I would like to nominate my friend and colleague, Councilmember Greg Vartan.
Do I have a second?
And I will second that nomination.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Council President. Okay, the floor is yours, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to Reverend Harriel. Thank you to Assemblywoman Munoz. There are a number of other dignitaries that we have here this evening. We have New Jersey Republican State Committee Woman Dorothy Berger. We have former council presidents Mike McTiernan and Dave Naidoo. We have Democratic City Committee Chair Andrea Stein, Republican City Committee Chair Nick Curial, and former councilmember Al Dill, and Superintendent Scott Huff as well. So the next thing on our agenda is the election of the 2023 president pro temp. This is the person who will act as president of the Common Council in my absence and as mayor in her absence. Nominations are now in order, and I will start by nominating my friend and colleague, Councilwoman Susan Hairston. Is there a second? Okay. Any other nominations at this time? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Council President. So congratulations to Councilmember Delia Hamlet. Welcome. Congratulations to Councilmember Lisa Allen on her reelection. And congratulations to our new president pro temp, Susan Hairston. She is the first woman of color to hold that position, and I am proud to serve alongside someone who continues to make Summit history. Congratulations to the family members and friends who are here to support all three of them. Next, I will speak briefly about former council president Marjorie Fox. Two months into Marjorie's tenure as council president, the pandemic arrived in our city and posed the most serious threat in the history of this community. Summit's council had to constantly adjust to the ever-shifting federal, state, and local health protocols and continuously adapt the role of government. While she was council president, we took dozens of actions, along with the mayor and our extremely dedicated city staff, to protect this city. Closure of Maple Street, parklets, and allowing for creative use of public space and many other initiatives allowed businesses to thrive. Now, our downtown is 99% occupied and has been awarded as one of New Jersey's great places. The vaccine clinic, established at the community center in partnership with Atlantic Health, ensured access to the vaccine for our most vulnerable neighbors, kept the hospital from becoming overwhelmed, and surely saved lives. In other words, Summit came through the most challenging period in our history and is strong today because of how council acted during Marjorie's time as council president. I applaud her selflessness and her commitment to duty. I'm glad for the opportunity to continue serving alongside her, and it's my pleasure to present her with this ceremonial gavel. We'll take a picture. I'm incredibly thankful and truly honored to become council president. I'm most thankful for my wife, Megan, and my family with how to support I would not be able to serve. I'm thankful for my fellow councilmembers placing their faith in me. As we move ahead into this year, I want to be upfront with the community about what you can expect, both for me as a leader and also from our city government. I will briefly outline those things now. For me, you can expect that I will continue to lead with my values: honesty, respect, courage, and determination. In all things, I will seek a balanced approach. I take my new role and the business of government incredibly seriously. But I am joyful about the opportunities we have to make a difference in this community that we all love. And I hope you will find that my attitude will be positive and welcoming. I have respect for the intentionally slow and deliberative pace of government, but I believe we should vigorously pursue the initiatives that will make this great community even stronger. From our government, you can expect actions we take to fit into one of the following three buckets. First, ensuring and enhancing health and safety. Second, responsibly managing our financial resources. And third, pursuing the goals that are outlined in the master plan. Specifically, during this year, before the end of 2023, we will continue our initiatives to address auto theft, work to improve pedestrian safety and the flow of traffic, ensure the utility companies fix the roads they have ripped up during necessary upgrades, support the efforts of nonprofit groups and city departments to assist our unhoused population, adopt a responsible municipal budget, bring the Broad Street West redevelopment through a process that considers all options and to a conclusion that makes sense for the Summit community, reach a decision about the future of Maple Street, open the dog park at the transfer station and plan for the rehabilitation and replacement of playgrounds, advance construction of the Parkline Trail, and continue to support the rehabilitation and construction of affordable housing. In addition to these specific actions, we must place emphasis on finding creative sources of funding from grants and other levels of government, increasing our environmental sustainability, improving the resident user experience, and ensuring equity. Councilmembers will need to work with each other, with city staff, with the hundreds of volunteers who give their time and talent on boards and commissions, and with the community at large in a collegial and collaborative manner. You will notice a change in the order of business for council meetings. The public comment period for items that are not on the agenda has been moved to after the consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At the most basic level, the purpose of council meetings is to conduct official city business that has been listed in the agenda and detailed in the packet ahead of time. From a practical standpoint, by discussing, deliberating, and deciding on those known items first, we give councilmembers, staff, and the community the opportunity to fully explain, ask questions, comment, and truly debate the actions that our government is taking. There will continue to be opportunities for public comment on every action item. Once that is complete, we will have comments for topics that are not on the agenda. I believe this will increase engagement and foster greater understanding of the work of our municipal government. I speak for every member of council when I say we want to hear thoughts, concerns, and ideas from members of the community. There are several ways you can contact councilmembers. Our phone numbers, emails, and mailing addresses are all located on the city website. Please reach out. We are happy to forward inquiries to the right department head or committee or respond directly. But I would also like to outline a few new things we'll be doing to increase access. Soon, council will have office space in City Hall for meetings and appointments with residents and set office hours. In small groups, no more than three, council will host informal Facebook Live chats on specific topics that may be of interest and answer questions virtually. And on a regular basis during the council president's report, I will encourage other councilmembers to provide updates on what they're doing in their respective committees. I recognize there are challenges we face as a community, but I am fiercely optimistic that Summit's best days are ahead. Thank you for the incredible honor and pleasure of serving the people of Summit who know the power of our voice and the value of our vote. I look forward to an excellent year. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll now call on Mayor Rades for her State of the City address.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the reorganization meeting.
I'm not as tall as Reverend Harriel. Welcome to the 2023 Organization Meeting of Summit Common Council. Thank you for joining us, whether it is in the council chamber, on YouTube, or Hometown TV. My heartfelt congratulations to Councilmember Lisa Allen on her reelection to council, and congratulations and welcome to Delia Hamlet on her election to council. I look forward to working with you and all the members of council in this coming year. Congratulations to Councilmember Greg Vartan on his election as council president. I am confident you will handle this responsibility beautifully. We are fortunate to live in a beautiful and well-managed city. I want to thank Michael Rogers, every department head and city staff member for the dedication, hard work, and creative thinking that you bring to your jobs every day. With COVID-19 moving into the rearview mirror in 2022, you all were called upon to focus on many projects that were on hold during the pandemic. You rose to the occasion, and our city is running well. Many of you are here tonight, that of you are here tonight have heard me say that Summit's greatest asset is its core of volunteers. We all want to make the Summit the best it can be for our residents, businesses, and visitors. By working together for the benefit of others, we get to know one another as neighbors. That is the essence of community, striving to make everything better for all of us. And in doing so, we each gain satisfaction and joy. Just think about the good that comes from the volunteer-run Summit free market. Residents can give things away they do not need, and others can come and take what they need, all for free. Or look at Grace Pantry, volunteers who provide food for hundreds of people who are food insecure, most of whom live in Summit. Obviously, I cannot list all the volunteer boards and committees, but the number of volunteers must be in the thousands, and I see many here tonight. So for that, I am deeply grateful. In the last year, however, I have seen an increase of incivility among residents, and that disturbs me. We will not always agree on how to do things, but we must try to be better at listening to each other and being respectful of our differences. We certainly experienced an increase of community engagement in 2022, and I absolutely welcome that. When we share our ideas, we improve our plans and projects. As an example, the original Broad Street West redevelopment proposal was scrutinized by residents and found to be wanting. Council listened and will not build anything on the lot between the library and the YMCA, and I am confident that a building will be built on the current firehouse lot that will satisfy most, if not all, our residents. I am hopeful that all of us will hit the reset button and have respectful and productive discussions. I recognize that we, your leaders, must regain a measure of trust that we lost last year. I pledge to do everything in my power to raise the level of trust to where it was before. Every person on the dais and sitting in this chamber or watching from home wants what is best for Summit, and working together, working well together, I think will get us there. So now, some specific details about various departments and what they accomplished in 2022. First, Summit and police departments. As you all know, we experienced a rash of car thefts in the summer, but thankfully, we have not had a car stolen since September. The police altered their patrol process and added four new officers to the patrol division following several retirements of senior officers. Importantly, residents were conscientious about locking their cars and bringing their keys into their homes. In the first half of 2022, Summit was on pace for more than 40 vehicle thefts, but with diligence, we finished the year with 26. Chief Segorsky has requested additional cameras throughout our perimeter as part of his capital budget request. That will be further discussed by the finance committee. And additionally, the safety committee is looking at an ordinance that would impose a fine on anyone who attempts to steal a car from private property. A top of serious concern among residents is pedestrian safety. We will be launching a pedestrian safety informational campaign in the coming weeks. It is critical that drivers look closely when approaching crosswalks, check to make sure no one is beginning to cross. Now, once a pedestrian is in the crosswalk, that person does have the right of way. That said, pedestrians should always look to make sure the driver sees you. I have witnessed people crossing the street while looking at their phones. I believe it is the mutual responsibility of the driver and the pedestrian to be watchful. This year, the police department welcomed back Officer Anthony Pizik after a lengthy and successful rehabilitation. The department achieved accredited agency status and joined other Union County Police Departments in establishing a safe place program with downtown businesses as part of a community policing initiative. As you drive down Broad Street, it's hard to miss the new firehouse under construction. I am happy to report that the project is on budget and on track to be finished by early June. During the construction, there have been no big surprises and very few change orders. I know our firefighters are looking forward to relocating to their new building. We have been raising some private funds to provide exercise equipment and living quarter furniture for our firefighters. We are not quite at our goal yet, so if you want to donate and buy a brick paver, please go to the city website at cityofsummit.org. In 2022, the fire department responded to approximately 2,400 calls and successfully completed a state inspection audit. In 2023, they will be completing a survey of all multifamily dwellings and all new commercial buildings to ensure fire operations plans are set. This will help to streamline response times in emergency situations. While the number of commuters that are parking in Summit continues to slowly return to pre-pandemic levels, we are also seeing more people visiting and parking in our thriving downtown. As council president mentioned, we have a 99% downtown retail occupancy. As Council President mentioned, we have a 99% downtown retail occupancy rate, which is really pretty uncommon. In 2022, council approved the addition of more 15-minute spots to increase turnover and access to storefronts. Onto the Department of Community Programs. As the pandemic started to slow down, they finally saw the community center start to be used as it should be. Many of our old and new seniors, adults, and children were back enjoying the strong array of programs that were offered. The department implemented a new registration system called Civic Rec, which will enable residents to have an easier experience and is directly tied to the city website. We continue to offer robust programming for the entire community to ensure the needs of all residents. Many new programs were added to fill recreation programming gaps, including Pickle Wall, a field hockey league for girls, and an expanded volleyball program were also added to serve as feeder programs to middle and high school sports. The inclusion component to the Summit Recreation Camp was expanded, allowing for a completely inclusive summer camp experience for over 25 tri-can youth with special needs. DCP also signed a pledge to join the Mayor's Wellness Campaign to ensure they continued meeting community recreational needs. The building was used as a vaccination center until the end of May, which ultimately was a blessing for all Summit residents and people in surrounding towns. Well over 50,000 individuals received vaccinations at the community center, and DCP was proud to partner with Grace and Flag to hold the second annual Community Thanksgiving. In addition to the indoor activities, we saw huge crowds at our special events, including two new cultural events, the Juneteenth Celebration and the Asian American Pacific Islanders Festival. The Summit Family Aquatic Center eclipsed the record numbers of 2021 with just under 5,400 members and over 60,000 visits for the first time ever. And while the Muni stayed consistent at 1,556 members, 15,700 rounds of golf were played. Through capital expenditures and grants and to the light of the basketball community, the Memorial Field and Tacklock Basketball Courts received a state-of-the-art facelift. We have started the master plan for all city playgrounds, which include MAYBE, Tatlock, Brayton, East Summit, the Art Park at Wilson, and the Aquatic Center. Hopefully, by year's end, we will see the start of work on MAYBE Playground. A new showmobile with a handicap lift, upgraded LED light system, and an extended stage has been ordered and should be here just in time for the start of our special events in the spring. And lastly, through a collaboration with the Summit Lacrosse Alumni, there will be a new lacrosse practice wall and a gazebo at Investors Bank Field at some point this year. Department of Community Services, which probably touches almost all of us, it's our roads, it's our trash, it's everything. The department planted 920 trees in the city towards its 2023 goal of planting 1,000 trees. As of mid-December, DCS staff processed 5,532 See Click Fix requests. They processed 2,300 Open Public Records Act requests, which represents a 217% increase over the prior year. And the city received $1,687,388 from county, state, and federal grants. The engineering and public work staff were very busy in 2022. They performed over 250 inspections and reviewed 315 annual engineering permits as of December 1, 2022 for grading, water and gas, curbs and sidewalks, sanitary sewers, and road openings. Two miles of city roads were paved through capital budget improvements and through negotiations with PSENG as part of a citywide gas main upgrades. DCS coordinated with New Jersey American Water and PSENG for large-scale improvements to critical infrastructure, utility infrastructure. I know there was considerable disruption, particularly on Morris and Summit avenues, but the infrastructure was in serious disrepair and needed to be replaced. The roads will be properly paved in the spring, and micro paving on 12 streets for a total of 27,100 square yards was also completed in 2022. DCF staff performed 21,000 linear feet of storm and sanitary video inspections to find blockages in our aging pipes before they ruptured. Our engineering staff responded to numerous calls from residents, contractors, and agents to resolve several grading and drainage disputes between neighbors. The Engineering Division also prepared in-house construction plans for upcoming 2023 capital improvement projects, having a projected value of approximately $250,000. To date, they conducted 10 traffic speed studies utilizing radar equipment. The Safety Committee will discuss any measures that may need to be taken based upon the results of the studies. Engineering also managed in-house inspection and project management for the Park Avenue Improvement Project, which is valued at $80,000 savings. The Park Avenue Beautification Project will transform the business retail area, incorporating decorative streetlights and sidewalks, and the planting of new street trees. Phase 1 of the Summit Park Line Project received a new pedestrian bridge over Morris Avenue. We fully expect the project to continue over the next year. Affordable housing comes under the umbrella of the Department of Community Services. We made progress in 2022 with the city's affordable housing initiatives, including, but not limited to, the following. One, several additional 30-year affordable deed restrictions were filed for various locations throughout the city. The city began discussions with the group home nonprofit for deed restriction with one of their existing Summit properties. Planning for the Broad Street West Redevelopment Project continued and will continue in 2023. If developed, the project will lead new construction units toward the city's 50-unit goal by 2025. The zoning board approved a development application that will yield seven new construction units under the multifamily set-aside ordinance, all of which will count towards the city's 50-unit goal by 2025. Brandywine Living, which is the assisted living facility at 41 Springfield Avenue, produced 10 units under the mandatory 10% state set-aside. Morris Habitat began construction on their 12-unit 100% affordable project at 146 Morris Avenue. The city's Affordable Housing webpage was updated to include an Affordable Housing 101 Information Guide. The Affordable Housing Committee met in February of 2022 to discuss the status of affordable housing activity in the community, and again in October of 2022 for a fall progress update. The next committee meeting will be held in February of 2023. The detailed 2022 annual report and all prior reports, as well as meeting information, can be found at cityofsummit.org. And our crucial Communications Office ensures that information is shared with citizens in a comprehensive and timely manner. The city website is the official place to find information on City of Summit actions. I encourage everyone to sign up for notifications so you will not miss items of importance from city agencies and offices. In 2022, the number of our website visits continued to grow with 579,893 visits, 569,975 page views, and 487,230 users. The top searches were for information on birth certificates, parking, and Broad Street West redevelopment, with recycling and trash a close fourth. Followers on social media channels continued to grow as well, with 56,888 visits to Facebook and 319 new followers in 2022. Top posts reached from 4,000 to more than 9,000 followers. Twitter saw an increase of 108 new followers with 55,113 visits. Our YouTube channel generated 239 new subscribers and 7,261 hours of watch time, and the city Instagram channel has climbed to 4,896. I appreciate everyone who has visited me during my office hours at City Hall or to meet the mayor weekend event. It is important to me to hear from residents and business owners, and I will continue that priority through 2023. Thank you for your time and your attention this evening. I look forward to 2023 being a very productive year. Thank you.
I will now call on 2022 Council President Marjorie Fox for the recognition of retiring council members.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Sullivan, would you like to join me up here, please? Okay, so let me just get our goodies here. So on behalf of the mayor and council, I'm pleased to present this map to our friend and colleague Danny O'Sullivan. So Danny is dedicated to Summit, and has always rolled up his sleeves and volunteered in the community. Throughout his three years on council, he was a regular at Earth Day cleanups and workdays at the Tiny Forest and the Park Line. As a longtime basketball coach, Danny has worked with many young residents of Summit and continues to coach teams, even though his children are no longer involved in Summit sports. Danny has been laser-focused on the city's recreation facilities, including overseeing a major investment in the Summit Family Aquatic Center during the pandemic and renovations of the basketball courts at both Memorial Field and Tatlock. He has also worked on plans for rehabilitation and replacement of Summit's playgrounds. Danny has also strongly advocated for Summit with the county, regularly attending county commissioners' meetings to cultivate relationships, keep Summit concerns top of mind, and to push forward projects like improvements at Bryant Park and the permanent dog park at the transfer station. Finally, Danny oversaw the removal of the gates in the DeForest parking lots, which saved the parking utility 3/4 of $1 million in capital expenditures, as well as $50,000 each year in software licensing fees. This measure makes the lots more user-friendly and makes Summit more welcoming to shoppers. Those are just a few of the things that Danny's done. I would be here all night if we went on on these, but I'm confident that Summit will continue to benefit from Danny's commitment and skill as a volunteer, and I look forward to seeing what he does next. Thank you so much, Danny.
Yeah, sure. I need a boss.
It's my fault, not yours.
She was not able to be here this evening, but on behalf of mayor and council, we will be presenting a map to Beth as well. So Beth and I met in 2017 when we both ran for council for the first time. Beth was someone who was already involved in the leadership of what seemed to be every organization in Summit, including several PTOs, the Santa Claus Shop, Summit Sharks Swim Team, and the Summit Summies, among others. Beth's deep knowledge of our community is one of the reasons that she was such an effective council member. Beth has proven her skills in advocating for the needs of the community and clearly communicating complex issues to the public. She has always had a laser focus on what is important to Summit residents and how Summit's government can deliver. Beth spent her first three years on council as liaison to the Summit Housing Authority. In that role, she was a fierce advocate for residents of the Housing Authority properties, improving their living conditions and ensuring that the Housing Authority leadership was responsive to the residents' needs. Beth also demonstrated the ability to synthesize large amounts of complex information and communicate it clearly and persuasively, and she demonstrated this particularly in her two years serving on the planning board. She summarized months of expert testimony concerning a proposed development project and applied applicable law to preserve Summit's neighborhoods and to ensure that development did not create risks to pedestrians and drivers. Summit is a better community because of Beth's service, and we owe her great thanks, and we hope to see her back soon. So with that, I will get this to her, and thank you for your time.
Marjorie, do you want to stay for the next part? And I'll also now call on Mayor Rades and former Council President Fox for the recognition of retiring volunteers.
You're able to be here tonight, I think I see some of you. So representing a great, long service on the Mayor's Partnership for Public Art and Summit, I would ask Deborah Schwartzman, Estelle Fournier, Jessica Oppenheim, and Marie Cohen to come forward.
We have tremendous public gardens, and very due to all your hard work, so thank you. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Dr. Robert Slama, who served on the Board of Health. Is he here? No. Okay.
Are you not doing? You have Board of Education?
No, that's not now.
Not now?
Until the spring.
Okay.
Billy Govea from the Community Programs Advisory Board.
Okay, so the next ones, I guess, or that one is yours. Right, okay, so the next person is Cynthia Verhaave from the Economic Development Committee. Is Cynthia here tonight? Okay, so you've got Ruth Bell. Okay, nope. Okay, right, so next is Tom Conway and Allison Chiefo from the Historic Preservation Commission. Are either of them here tonight?
From the Library Board of Trustees, I'd like to call up Susan Callahan.
Okay, so next we have David Silk and Jennifer Winters from the Parking Advisory Committee. Are either of them here tonight? Okay, no. Oh, wait.
Thank you so much for your service, and we welcome you on community programs. Yes, okay, thank you.
Another picture.
Awesome.
And now from the Planning Board, Andy Perella and Richard Fior. I don't see either one.
All right. Some PALS.
Yep. From the Police Athletic Advisory Board, Christopher Murphy, Dennis McKeever, Gennaro D'Agostino, Jeff Conroy, Christopher Tomon, Paul O'Shea. And that's it. Any of them, men or women, are here?
Okay, then we have a few from the Recycling Advisory Committee. We've got Anna Istupinen, who I believe is at school. I don't know if we'll see her tonight. Gillian Hempel, Karen Rehoffer, and Sophie Malik. Are any of them here tonight? Okay, well, thank you all for your service. I think the Rent Commission is next for you.
And Marie Cahill from the Rent Commission.
Okay, and we've got Laura O'Rourke from the Silver Summit Senior Citizens Committee. Is Laura here tonight? No, I can't see her. And we've got, last but not least, Jamie Levine, who was on the zoning board. Thank you so much for your service on the zoning board. We appreciate all of our volunteers. As the mayor always says, our best asset is our volunteers.
Thank you for everything. And all the volunteers who are still volunteering, thank you, thank you.
Well, excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor, former council president. We're moving on to the announcement of 2023 appointments, so I will start with the 2023 Council Standing Committees. So for this year, we're going to have on our Administrative Policies and Community Relations Committee. That's going to be chaired by Councilmember Allen, with Councilmember Levine as well. We're going to have on our Capital Projects and Community Services Committee, Councilmember Levine is going to be chairing along with Councilmember Fox. And then on Community Programs and Parking Services, Councilmember Hamlet will chair with Councilmember Miniger with her on that one. Then on Finance, we'll have Councilmember Miniger chairing that along with Councilmember Allen. And then for Law and Labor, we'll have that chaired by Councilmember Hairston and joined by Councilmember Hamlet. And then on Safety and Health, we'll have that chaired by Councilmember Fox along with Councilmember Hairston. So this is listed in the packet that everyone has access to on the website, as well as, in addition to that, every council member does about five or six, or sometimes seven or eight additional liaison assignments to the various boards and commissions that we have. I don't want to waste everyone's time reading through all of that, so if you're on a board or commission, you'll be hearing soon from your council liaison. If you're curious about who it is, it's also in the agenda packet as well. So, sorry?
It's also on the website.
It's also on the city website, yes. I will now turn over to Mayor Radies to announce some of her appointments, if you want to do that.
Well, they're all in the packet. Rosa, you have the list?
Yes. Do you want the list now?
Well, yeah, sure. There aren't that many. Maybe we won't do this. There's lots of things. It's on the website, it's under the Council Agenda Packet, but there are, you know, there's got to be 50 people here, just from my appointments, and then there are other appointments that are appointed by the zoning board, by the council members only, and other appointments that are the mayor's appointment with advice and consent of council. So it's kind of mixed up, but anyway, please check out the website, and thank you again for being willing to serve.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Next up on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. We have a number of annual resolutions, and we will take them all at once. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. And we have a second. Any council member comments on this? Yes, Councilmember Hamlet.
Council President Vartan, will you be taking any of these separately, pulling them out?
No, we have a motion and a second on the whole thing, but if you have comments on individual ones, we can certainly chat about that now.
And if you're not able to vote on something, or you're not comfortable, you can absolutely abstain since you're new to the council.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
There was just three that I had comments on, so whenever you...
You can make, since there's a motion and a second, now would be the appropriate time to comment. Just identify, you know, if it's under Safety and Health, number two, or whatever it is.
First is ID number 9829, which is establishing the council rules. Council President Vartan, I would just like to comment in regards to public comments moving to the end for things that are not on the agenda. Having only left that section a few minutes ago, I know how strongly some of the residents feel about public comments being in the beginning. I also recognize that the city has to get business done and get our staff home safe. Council President Vartan, if we find that the public is not as engaged because of this new rule, because of late time commitments, will there be an opportunity to look at some flexibility throughout the course of the year?
Oh, yeah, yes, certainly, yes. You know, I think, so I'll say, I think it will absolutely increase engagement, and I think, you know, we have certainly a good deal of flexibility. You know, if somebody is in dire need of getting home for some reason and needs to comment, we can certainly do that. But, you know, I think we can always make changes to this. We can always make changes, so, thank you.
I only have two more. The second is regarding 9828, establishing council, board, and committee assignments. I'd like to acknowledge that the council, myself, as previous candidate-elect, have had two meetings on committee appointments. Before being in this position, I didn't know that. This is my first experience at this effort, and I was pleasantly surprised at the talented pool of residents that applied. Through you, Council President, I'd like to ask the city clerk, Rosemary, will you be able to provide an update to the public on what openings remain at some point in the next week or so? I am aware the listings are available on the website, but I would like to see a more concise list and be able to share that with the residents so that they continue to apply throughout the year.
Through you, Council President?
Absolutely.
So every agenda that I prepare for each council meeting, on the very first page, there is a listing of all openings that still have to be addressed, and that changes as those are filled and as vacancies arise. So I would recommend that the public focus on that first page. It'll be updated frequently.
Great, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments, members of council?
Sure. Okay, do you want to go first? You go first.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Delia. Thank you, Council President Vartan. I'd also like to comment on ID 9829, which is establishing the council rules. Embedded in there is the agenda for our common council meetings, but I'd like to focus on a different aspect of the agenda that I think is very important to me and I think has a lot of potential, which is the comment section that we as council members get to make on items not on the agenda. Until now, that item has been dead last on the agenda. When I joined council and I scanned the agenda for when it's my turn to share things that are important to me, things I'm working on in committee, things that continually arise at the committee level that aren't yet agenda-ready to share with the public in this open format, I realized I had an opportunity, but it was way at the end. And Council President, I'm so heartened by, in your opening remarks, how you shared that you hoped to, in the beginning during your opportunity to give an update, that you would look to your colleagues to also share what's happening in our committee, because I think that's something we all would like to do. I think that, in my mind, when it comes to governance, is really the definition of transparency, it's sharing what's happening before it's really fully done. And then, Delia, to your point, the relationship, I think this makes when public comments are on non-agenda items less critical, and the reason is because the public is coming and asking questions on items that are very well what we should be sharing in our updates on non-agenda items, and if we go first, it sort of feels like the natural order, that we're giving these updates, we're providing information on things that are important to us and what's on our mind, and then the public is then asking, either their question's been answered, or they're asking a follow-up question, and it feels natural, and it feels like a nice way to go. So while we are all, at the end, you and me together, where I'd like the order of events, and for that reason, I'm very pleased with the change to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Allen?
Thank you, Council President. I don't want to belabor the point. I wanted to talk about the change in order of public comment at the end. So I support the change, and I concur with Councilwoman Hamlet and Councilwoman Levine. So depending on what's happening throughout the year, if the public comment is not working properly, like people feel that they're disenfranchised, or they feel like they don't know what time to come because public comments are so late, if there's a long agenda, then I'm optimistic that you'll be flexible and change that as needed. So I just wanted to say that. And I think that I'm also heartened by the fact that there's going to be a lot of opportunity to have dialogue with office hours, with Facebook Lives and so forth, so, you know, we'll adjust as needed. So I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you. Any other council member comments on that? Okay, so I think we're ready for a vote on our consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Okay. See how I was controlled about that?
Very good. Thank you.
Apparently I scare people. Whatever.
Council President?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Does the public get to comment on the consent?
We're going to go to public comments right now. We'll take public comments on anything.
We already voted.
We've just, yeah, I mean, we've just voted on it, but...
But you didn't ask the public if they wanted to comment on it.
So we're now going to open the public comment period, and we'll welcome comments on whatever we've got.
Give him a break.
Reverend Harriel wants to make a public comment.
Thank you, Council President. My public comment is that visibility is so important, and I respect the concern for reading names by the mayor and the council president.
Reverend, can I ask you to face me, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's it.
It's just, the cameras will be on you, and then people will be able to hear you from home.
Thank you, David. Watch this wire.
Thank you, David. Very good. Just watch your step. Watch your step, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that visibility is very important, and to save time, of course, not to read the names, but there are a number of persons who are appointed, will be serving on various committees and commissions for the first time, and they're here, and if we could ask them to stand because some of their neighbors might see them and be so inspired and motivated and say, "What? I can't believe you're doing this." So if we could just have those new persons standing.
That's a good suggestion.
And let us all see them because they're all part of this.
That's a good suggestion. If we could have all of the new people that have been appointed just for the first time tonight stand up, that would be great, and we'll recognize them. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Okay, we're still open for public comments, so we're taking whatever.
I'm going to say something on the last part there. Hi, Dory Gagnon. So I know it's your first time, so I'm not going to pick on you. Establishing the council rules, so I have a couple of things that I think might make this year a little bit easier, so Dory's army doesn't come and attack you at every So I think a lot of the problems with the council meetings is that with Broad Street West and we had Maple Street, a lot of these things were coming at you guys that weren't on the agenda, and the Maple Street presentation, I feel, should have been done on another night when you guys didn't have a long council meeting to follow up on it. So I think going into this year, Council President Vartan, some suggestions might be when we have a big presentation, maybe hold it another night, not along with a council meeting, so you guys can get your business. I understand how important it is. When we have Broad Street West coming forward, you know, if we have meetings for Broad Street West, I think the public would appreciate that having to be on another night, because having us all wait here for you guys to get done with your financials, and then us, the public comment, that just gets really long. And I understand, you know, Mr. Rogers doesn't want to be here till 1:00 in the morning. He's tired, he's mentioned that many times. We all don't want to be here, we all have families and stuff, so that's something to, you know, to think about. And one more thing, the appointments. I know a lot of us don't agree. We don't get along, and we don't come to a common sense, but when we work on boards, the bipartisan work together is what gets things moving. And I was truly upset at my friend and my colleague not being reappointed, and I think sometimes we do things, and we've all made mistakes this last year, and I think there are ways of going about discussions and talking to somebody and not dismissing somebody. And I think when there is a vacancy now in this committee, and she is no longer part of that, and she's put a lot of time into this city and given her time and her commitment to something, and she's got kids in the district, and she's no longer part of this one organization, and I'm not even going to put her name out there or what it is, because everybody knows what it is, I just want to tell you that I'm very upset about it, and I know a lot of people here tonight are as well. So I think we all don't agree, but when we're working together in organizations, I'm on a lot of boards, we all seem to work together to come to a common ground, and that's what makes this city so unique. And all of these volunteers today, I'm telling you, it's what makes Summit so wonderful, like you said, Mayor. So just remember that going forward. Have a conversation first. We all are not perfect, but that's what makes Summit so wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. All right. Well, seeing no other public comments, I think we're ready to adjourn our first meeting. Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. All right. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you very much.